Hereby called to order this regular meeting of Danbury Board of Education, all those in attendance please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're on for our recognition section this evening. First up on the list, we have our Teacher of the Year for 2012. And to introduce our Teacher of the Year, she's from Moore Street School. We have the Principal, Mr. Santissaro. We'll give you the floor to introduce the Teacher of the Year.
It is my huge pleasure, I'm sorry.
I'll put the mic there though.
Please. Hi, everybody. It is a huge pleasure for me to be here. And just to look at Mrs. Butterly, we try not to be... You know, it has been my pleasure to work with Judy for the past 15 years at Moore Street School. And she's always been the most humble of teachers, the quietest of teachers, but one of the most effective of teachers. And this award could have gone to her time and again. This is just a delayed something that should have happened to her a long time ago. And I know I'm embarrassing her right now. So Judy, with all my heart, I just congratulate you for everything that you've done. And this award is so deserving. Yes, we do. In November or possibly October, we're going to be having a reception for Mrs. Butterly. It's going to be at my school. And we're going to be inviting as many of the students as we can that she has had as a teacher. And staff members that have worked with her as well are going to be at my school. And it's going to be a tremendous event. It's going to be probably a good three or four hour event. And it's going to be a true tribute to Mrs. Butterly. And as I said, awesome, 48 years she's been doing this. And she is as fresh as the day she started teaching. And she continues to be an inspiration.
As we read the literature, you keep hearing about what's going on in the country about, you know, keeping younger and retiring the rest. I think people tend to forget there are a lot of wonderful, wonderful educators who have been in the profession for 40 years. And it's as if their first year and they're doing wonderful. And there's an example. We're so proud to have you with us. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mrs. Butterly. A job very well. Thank you. Also in our recognition section this evening, we'd like to introduce Shawana Tucker. She's under Director of Adult and Continuing Education. So we'd like to welcome Shawana to the district. Thank you very much for joining us. Now onto public participation. The board welcomes public participation and asks that speakers please limit their comments to three minutes. Speakers may offer objective comments of school operations and programs that concern them. The board will not permit any expression personally, points to defamatory comments about Board of Education personnel, students, nor any person connected with the Danbury Public School system. I'd like to remind people who are speaking to sign in at the back and to please speak into the microphone. That being said, is there anyone in the front row who wishes to address the board this evening? Second row? Mr. Haddad?
Good evening. How are you? Good evening. Most of you know me. If you don't, Kevin Haddad, Denver resident, fourth grade teacher at King Street, contribute. I noticed on your agenda tonight, you have, at least, oh boy, you had some redistricting discussion possibly to take place. And I was very pleased to see it added to the agenda. I think redistricting is what our school system currently needs. It's well overdue. It's a fair and equitable way to solve a lot of the problems that we have in our schools right now. It's really a shared sacrifice, which I think if it's presented that way to the residents of the town, people are willing, you know, to move the boundaries of schools. But I think if some of the other proposals that are out there involve blessing kids across town and really drastically shaking things up, this is a much more equitable way of, you know, fixing schools that are horribly overcrowded and balancing them with ones that have some empty classrooms. So I was very pleased to see it on the agenda and look forward to seeing what comes of it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Haddad, for your participation. Anyone else in the second row who wishes to address the board this evening? Anyone in the third row? Anyone in the fourth row?
Hi, I'm Laura Me. I was hired 19 years ago, this past August, just four days before kids showed up in my room to teach first grade. And tonight, you recognize as a 2011-2012 Teacher of the Year, the one woman who walked into my room with a gracious smile and said, "Hi, I'm Judy. What can I do to help you?" I had no idea in that one moment the impact that Judy Butterly would have on me as a teaching partner, a colleague, an educator, and especially as a friend. I wanted to know that although she would be perfectly happy to go about her teaching, about teaching first graders without any recognition at all, and she'd probably prefer being home right now with a glass of wine, you have selected one of the most deserving elementary educators in the district. This August started Judy's 47th year of dedicated service to children. During this time... Forty-eight? Forty-seven? Forty-eight? Okay, you're done with forty-seven. Okay, start her 48th year. Sorry, Jude. During this time, she has been trained in Reader's Workshop, Writers Workshop, Wordwork, Vintie Benson's Retelling Strategies, and Go Shape Chart, Lit Light, Cast a Spell, DRA1, DRA2, DSA, CST, SRVI, DDM, PAF, Instructional Planning and Alignment, and Data, Jordan Decision Making, Data Teams, Technology, I kid you not, Using Moodle, PLC, Stored Ring Murder in Thorn, Google Docs, Power Scroll, and the list goes on and on for someone who has been teaching for 47 years. However, this is not what has made her an exceptional teacher, colleague, and friend. Judy Butterly is the most patient and understanding human being I know. And if you know her husband Billy, you totally agree with me. They all know that. But seriously, her dedication to children goes beyond anything you could ever imagine. She makes each and every child in her room feel like the most important person in the world. She has a way of explaining difficult concepts in a very simple way and making it easy for all to understand. I know, because I've been one of those people. It amazes me how she remembers each and every student's name, each child's parent, and even grandparents, some of whom she's had multiple generations of. There is a warmth and sincerity about Judy for even the most difficult child or adult, for, I'm sorry, for even the most difficult to deal with child or adult. One of the greatest things about Judy is she never sugarcoats it. She's a straight shooter and will tell you how it is. But you never feel bad about yourself because somehow, you know, she's saying, what she is saying is honestly best for you. She's never judgmental with anyone, child or adult. Judy is the person at Moore Street that keeps us all grounded. She has lived with each of us through births, deaths, divorces, surgeries, remortgaging, my dissertation, and the ins and outs of everyday life. She's the consummate professional. She comes in early, stays late, teaches in the after-school program even after 48 years of teaching, as well as volunteers for events and committees. Although I do use the word volunteers loosely. I think I convinced Jude to chair the Sunshine Committee with me about 15 years ago. And all of a sudden something else within a few years. To this day, Judy is the Sunshine Committee at Moore Street School. And when Moore Street started their two committees in response to being identified as a school in need of improvement seven years ago, I nominated Judy to be the Secretary of Student Achievement Committee. I don't think I have to tell you who is still the Secretary of the Committee today. She's repeatedly said she will only retire when teaching stops being fun. Personally, I don't think that will ever happen. And thank goodness she has stuck it out through all the changes that education has thrown at her because she gets kids. And she knows what they need and what they don't, regardless of what program has come and gone over the years. Finally, something that you may not be aware of about the 2011-2012 Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Butterly has an innate gift of prognostication. This past winter marked her third consecutive year of 100% accuracy for calling snow days, delayed openings, and early dismissals. I repeatedly told Dr. Sal and Dr. Glass, there's really no need for a personal meteorologist or to get up at the 4:00 AM to make the call. All you have to do is to call Mrs. Butterly by 9:00 PM, just as my own children do, and she'll tell you what to do. It's really that simple. I cannot tell you how proud I am to have worked with Mrs. Butterly for my 19 years in Danbury. But it has gone far beyond working relationship. I've finally, I've finally come to refer to Judy as my mother on earth. I love you, Judy. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the fourth row who wish to address the board this evening? Anyone in the back? Mrs. Churney?
Hi, my name is Sandra Churney, and this will be quick. I just wanted to, now that we've gotten freshman sports behind us and the funding of freshman sports, and we're on track with all the kids on the fields and playing their individual sports, I would just like to say that it was a lot of work. It was a lot of effort. Some hard feelings, I'm sure, from both sides. But freshman sports is a necessity in our children's lives. And we would like to just make sure that the board understands the majority of the people in this town feel that way. And we want to ensure, and we will work very hard all year to ensure that freshman sports is not cut from the budget of the year. Thank you.
Anyone further from the back who wishes to address the board? Seeing the last call, public participation is not closed. We move on to the consent calendar. The chair seeks a motion to run the consent calendar.
Board of Education accrue the items on the consent calendar as recommended in Exhibit 11-25-7, through employee number 161.
Second. Senator, Mrs. Cooper. Any discussion on the consent calendar? Just want to raise a point. Just want to say thank you to the city through the United Way for their donation to the Family Literacy Center. There was a lot of talk over the last school year with the grant funding running out, that we would not be able to continue this. And I'm very appreciative of the city through the United Way for continuing to fund the Family Literacy Center, which is a positive service. So thank you very much. Any further discussion? Mrs. Cooper?
We should write out the date of this report and the service on board.
Yes, we're going to do that during action Monday. Any further discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing none, all is favorable to this by by saying aye, aye, opposed, extension, question tagged unanimously. Is there an employee representative who has seen this? Ms. Mears?
Good evening, Catherine Lee. Last year was the year that went in and this year was the one that would start, right? Hopefully, yeah, whether. But we're currently in negotiations. We'd just like to thank the board for the positive and professional tone of the sessions that we've had. Our team has felt that they've been very productive. And we head into mediation Thursday night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mears. Student representatives are not here, but I will be meeting with the student representatives at the high school Tuesday. We're going to be meeting with the Governor Council to talk about the role of the student representative in the board meetings. So hopefully, we'll have a lot of participation of our student reps from Danbury High School from this evening. Superintendent's report, Dr. Pasquale.
Welcome back, everyone. Thank you. Another favorite subject, redistricting. As you know, you are in Rome and they will talk about, we would have been able to, through STEM, the last few years, try to stabilize the middle schools relative to the imbalance between the two schools in Rome. But at this point, with the elementary numbers growing, we're going to have to go through and really study the possibility of regrouping. So before we start talking about which schools and which areas, one of the things that's important, I think, for the board to consider is a plan. As you know, we didn't have to Capitol Rock hire a consultant. What I did do was go through the archives that we have. We must have at least four or five reports done by specialists. So what I did was I went through there basically, this is not my original work, so you know, but I just did an extrapolation of that information to create a process, a draft for you to think about and change if you want to do that. And one of the things that they talked about in the, in the design was the concept of pocket, this, mini or pocket redistricting. And that is my proposal for you to think about versus looking at the entire map up there in the city of Denver and just redoing a whole city. I believe from what I can see, it's really necessary. So the term that was used in the past was pocket mini redistricting. So it would be consistent, I'm using that term. So this, the heading here is Danbury Public School Committee of Pocket Redistricting Draft. It gives you a background. It talks about the Peter Proctor Report. He's a gentleman that, you know, we hired to do the demography, the looking at work. And then the SAD report, which was commissioned by the city. And that did a spatialization study, which was quite a costly study that was done. And we had that at our disposal, we look at, and suggest we continue using that. The recommendation is to have a goal. And the goal that I would propose is that redistricting would be based upon the grade organization of 3th grade through 5, 6 to 8, and 9 to 12, which is currently under the operation that we had. At one time, the study that was done, you had a middle school that was 7, 8, 9. And the reorganization took place from 9th grade to 12th, or going up to the high school. But this reorganization goal is, I don't see any real change in our organization design at this point. Equality of learning, the aim of this goal is to have equal percentage capacity utilized from each building, with acceptable range of percentage points. What that really is talking about is that if we make any moves, if we do any redistricting, is to be sure that the space is there for a few years to be stable for the rest. Big for Danbury is the cultural diversity and quality of education. It expects that each school to have students of different races, languages, and country of origin. Specifically, the Ampli Media Center, a program established by the State Board of Ed, and the Office of Civil Rights, have the same proportion of minority students that exist in the city of Danbury is holding plus or minus 5%. As you know, going through these over the year, each year we have to do a study. And if we're out of compliance, and we can be, they give you a year to remedy. So going into it, we need to be mindful. If we do redistrict and students go to the X school, what's it going to do at the school they're going to? What's it going to leave behind at the school that they live? The district, mini redistricting, minimize the movement of students by reducing the affected families. That's the purpose of a pocket redistricting. An overcrowded school adjusts to those in need of redistricting. In addition to assure that the elementary to the middle school feeder pattern will have enrollment stability and ensure racial, ethnic, and social economic balance within our way. Stability of boundaries, having enrollment boundaries stable over the near term, that is for a minimum of about five years, is important to parents, students, and teachers, administrators, for some stabilization and transportation. Facility redistricting, to create a redistricting plan independent of any future building of school facilities that can't be used, could be for 2012. Let me just highlight that for a second. There's a lot of things going on in the city, or not going on, having a perspective. Some things are happening and some things are being waited on, some things are being studied. We have no control over what's going to happen relative to the recommendations. That's going to go to the City Council eventually. And then perhaps we're voting April for a new building, if that's what comes of fruition from the study. So I think it's the board's responsibility, through senior staff, to make a recommendation to accommodate the students next year, independent of anything that may happen from the city. If something should happen that could alter this, that's an hypothesis, we can then take that up and consider. But I think it would not be on the behalf, on the best interest of the teachers or the kids or the community to wait for any reaction or any approval by the city about what they're going to do regarding the space. Plus, we need to have a plan together so that it's going to, there's going to be budget implication and impact. And we need to have something by November. So I don't think this is something we want to wait. So my recommendation is not, that variable does not need to be considered in what we do at this point. It should just be focused on what the board has control of. And then take it up there. The other thing is, there's a lot of boogeymen out there. When we talk redistricting, people, there are a lot of rulers out there. I think there needs to be complete transparency. And I provided a guideline that was used before here in Danbury, or seen to work before. And it's on the second page. Well, that, the second page really is, I think, about, the second page is simply terms of, terms that go along, how, how long does it take to redistrict? Are there other reasons why you may want to redistrict? If you're leashing, you may want to read that. These, this was a glossary that went along with some of the studies. Here's the criteria. The criteria is to try to make, to keep neighborhoods, schools should be kept intact. Every effort should be made to avoid splitting definable neighborhood areas. Consideration of needs to be given, distribution of students by grade level, the mutual goal of reducing class size, no prejudice. Geophysical boundaries, use main streets, highways, and rivers, and natural cutoffs when you're looking at redistricting. With walkers, start with walkers, those who have prescribed walking distance, then extend the boundaries. Bus transportation, design bus routes so as to minimize distance and time in the bus and maximize efficiency. Expansion, allow room for an homonym increase in these schools so as to preclude the need to redistrict too soon. Remember, we talked about maybe five years. Avoid multiple moves, if possible, do not move children that previously have been redistricted. Transition year, if possible, consider transition year for those in the culminating grade, for example, 6th through 8th grade. Middle school system as redistricted, its elementary school, consider leaving the 5th grade is at their school, and so on. Permanency, new boundaries sustain the school system over a multi-year, five to eight years. The process that I suggest is that you allow the superintendent and the cabinet, working with the prospective principal, to prepare the redistricting plan. Then create a community study team, committee, represented from each impacted school, with principals and parents, a liaison from the Board of Ed, a city council member, whose function is to review, react, and suggest revisions to the proposed plan. Each principal will assist, with assistance from central office. And the study team will conduct information sessions at the school to explain the proposed plan. All input from all schools analyzed, and the superintendent and the committee prepares a second draft if necessary in a redistrict plan. A second round of information if necessary will be conducted by the study team. And after a final review, the study team, committee, superintendent, cabinet will prepare a final redistricting plan to be spent in Board of Ed for their approval. The Board of Ed adopts a redistricting plan. The intent is to have a plan ready by the November board, if possible.
So that being said, if any board members have questions, Dr. Pasquale on your side? Mr. Jennings?
Dr. Pasquale, the proposed redistricting, will that take into account some of the things that we may have control over with the assumption of the head start moving out next year? Will that impact, I know the, the other aspects, we have no control, but it seems like this is set in motion and we've been told that something will be there for head start in September of the next year.
Well, my recommendations, I would not consider any of that. No. I mean, I would have had no control over permits. You recall when they were building one school, they discovered lime or some kind of soil that had to be removed, expanded the month. Best case scenario, and I think they're very mindful and they think they're going to achieve this. I talked to Farid already, we got the permits. By the end of this month, I guess the buildings will be cleared so that they can knock it down. And then they have, they're getting approvals from the state. They think they'll start building sometime February. The units themselves only take a week to produce their modules. But then there's site development work. They think they'll be in by August. But I would not stand here and make recommendations on those permits, weather and all of that, and then stand here in April and say, you know, that's something else. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that. That wouldn't be my recommendation to the board. So the plan that I'm doing would not consider us taking it over as a school. We would utilize that building, minimally as we use it right now. Which we know we have at least a possibility of eight to 10 classrooms here to use, and we're currently using. That, that assumption will stay or may.
Mr. Tavasino?
Yes, just referring to what Dr. Pasquale said, I think it's, it's been pretty safe and sorry, is what I was saying, is we have to deal with what we have right now. Hopefully, everything that Rick just mentioned will come to fruition. But, you know, nothing is certain in life.
Thank you, Mr. Tavasino. Any further questions for Dr. Pasquale?
Well, not just a question, just a suggestion. Once the superintendent and all those involved have done the plan, I think it would be a great enhancement to the community and especially the board if we all had some type of communication needed. So everyone will be on the same page. I understand why we would redistrict.
I would, I would think I was going to suggest something similar in terms of a public counter, much like we did with the budget. That might be beneficial, that you can get the public out once it's been.
What I would ask, I'm sort of, I would ask the board to consider, maybe move through the plan, to think about who would like from the city council. That would be your choice. Ask Mr. Conville for a representative or two. And then for the need of board representation to...
Well, I think for the city council, we'll go through the council president for the recommendation of that. For the board, for the board representation, is this committee, is anyone looking to volunteer? Mrs. Cooper? And second? All right, Mr. Jennings? Okay, and then the forward request to council president, Carlos, for the recommendation.
Can you come through the process?
Yeah, I'd like to say that I think I'm very pleased about what we're seeing today. I think it's very responsive to what North has been putting forth over the past several months. And I think it's a positive step for us to be proactive in terms of, you know, finding a solution, given the resources that we control. You know, given anything new may not come, even if it's approved this spring, and I may not be ready for one, two, or three, four years. So I think it's, this is a very positive step for us to be able to maximize the super existence space.
Mr. Jennings?
I also think it's very important to have that, that community relations, that dialogue before. If you have two-way dialogue, it's very important to get the public's viewpoint, their opinions, likes, dislikes, we can express ours, and, you know, explain basically why we're trying to do this. And have everybody, pretty much at the end, understand the reasons for it and hope we get on board with it.
Anyone else? Move on?
Staffing enrollment, Bill?
The board members, we have been sharing with you since last June, the demographic information that we've gotten. information that we've gotten, specifically the demographic first projections, as Dal just said, the redistricting is a direct outgrowth of that. And we gave you some forms of something like this, the spreadsheet that had different colors on it. And our point at that time was that while we had some red flags up as we did our due diligence and some of these items were actually in red ink early on, such as this, these were all the hotspot areas that we were monitoring, those have all shifted now down to manageable numbers. If you recall, we mentioned that this volatility is typical as kids move in and out of the district, as kids move in the district from school A to school B, and as we try to get a handle on incoming kindergarten class. It's a wild part on that, a lot of parents were like, well, they kindergarten, they participate in a lottery. If they don't get it, they may go off to the public schools for a year that offer full day care. In some cases, parents aren't able to do that because of the economy. So the numbers have shifted back and forth. Bottom line, as of yesterday, we're in very good shape. There was no school that exceeds the tolerance levels that we've set. If you remember, first grade and kindergarten, first grade and third grade were our hot like items. We're all around twenty-two, twenty-three, max twenty-four at the first and second grade levels. At third grade, our concern was at thirty, twenty-nine. Most schools over twenty-seven as of yesterday. And in those cases where we have twenty-seven, for example, at Shelter Rock, we've been monitoring them very closely, we have three third grade classes that are all twenty-seven. Miss Moore, her feeling is please do not take those youngsters out and let them redistrict them. They've become vested in the school with religious ships with their parents, the teachers feel fine. I went over and visited, last week I visited all those schools and all those classrooms where we had tentative concerns. Teachers are fine, kids are fine, we're feeling good about this. We have had, and I asked Kim to partner with me on this reality check, we have had a good year with our recruitment efforts on turnover, came to minute on that, but we were concerned about making sure that we had enough placeholders in the budget to absorb an additional expansion. We had two people, a bunch of that at the elementary level, two people at the high school, three and a half at the middle school level. As it turns out, we hired two people at the high school, according to prediction, we actually won under with our real school predictions because of some movement within the school with the principal, Mr. Joe King was able to accomplish, we had two point five for Irish Park, two for STEM and one, a halftime person, point five person for ELS. And then at the elementary level to absorb the increase, we hired four point five. So we projected that we would be around eight teachers in the budget, we had eight placeholders, we actually nine and we're close enough so we can absorb that position without any difficulty whatsoever. Kim, can you add that?
Let me just piggyback on that for a second. I think too, we're still assessing the specialist at the elementary school. As you know, the way we arrange our scheduling at the elementary, we did reduce a specialist and our teachers receive their prep time, the elementary by, when their students go to specialists, they're relieved. We're right now auditing, making sure that everyone has a prep time and we, we may have to do some ad in there, but we need, we need a specialist.
I, I think when I addressed it previously, I did mention I have a little bit more information now, but we had quite a year for applicants, particularly the elementary level, we were seeing between two and three hundred applicants for every post position. It was just a tremendous pool, it was a very high quality pool. Sometimes the disfortunes of the rest of the state worked in our favor and this year was, was definitely true. I have had really nice reports from all of the principals around the district who really held to a pretty high standard in terms of reviewing applicants, interviewing applicants and then making their reports to us and really spending some time with the members of the cabinet and other administrators on why they selected the people they did. So we're feeling very good about the quality of, of teachers that we brought into the district. I think everybody's really, spirits are running very high and quite happy. So from that perspective, while we were extremely busy, I think we, we feel very good about the results. You'll see the personal report, you have the much longer version which includes all of the hiring we did. Numbers are large because we did have a lot of retirements, we had quite a few people that moved out to other ventures and so you'll see them, replacements, but the numbers tend to be a little bit higher than just the nine that Dr. West was talking about. It was, it was quite a season and certainly the HR specialists in my office are telling me it was one they hadn't seen in quite a while and they worked flat out for a long time, so I commend them for the work they did as well.
Overall, the numbers are official numbers October first, but, but the impact of their own unknown, we've been doing a collection, principals and their staff have been great about getting this and they change every day. But right now it stands just overall in the district, around two hundred and thirty-eight students total. At the elementary, we were at one hundred and thirty-six students. At the middle school, it's a plus forty-six. At the high school, it's a plus fifty-six. Actual numbers last year, this is your perspective, at broad view, at this time, at October one numbers, two thousand and ten, we had ten ninety-three. Two thousand and eleven, it can change, right now it's eleven oh-three, as it were. And Rogers Park with the STEM, the numbers last year, two-ten, ten seventy, and this year, two-eleven, we're at eleven oh-one, so they're within two students. But again, as Bill knows, the key data calls are changing. Now, one of the things that we had to do was because the teams at the middle school, as you may recall, they're setting plus, and our goal is to stay at about one twenty-five for them and we thought we, we might have to close enrollment. We have room at Rogers Park for students to go in the STEM and we're still encouraging them to do that because we have some open spots. We have not moved any sixth graders as of yet, although we're still checking as they, we have students on the roll that haven't shown up and they may show up, then they cause us to ask, have some parents as soon as go to Rogers Park where we have some roll. But right now, we're staying at that. And regarding high school, I did tell you, okay, the enrollment at the high school, last year, two-ten was twenty-eight seventy-five, we are now at high school twenty-nine thirty. Anything else?
No.
Just one question with that, I don't know if you mentioned it or not, I know a few weeks back we talked about cutting off kindergarten registrations at Shelter Rock. Do you know how many students ended up being moved over to Great Plains because of that?
I don't, but it was minimal. And the other piece with that is that we also have Action and Interface daycare students and when we have a school that has particularly low number, those are our youngsters, but because they had a full day program by going half days with us and half day with Action or Interface, we're able to place those youngsters throughout the city. That's the arrangement with the parents. So as we looked at this, because of some of the modifications we did in building, we need art room and so on and so forth, the shifting classrooms around the mayor, and then because of the usual ebb and flow, we have.
Just one second. The Shelter Rock, I didn't hear that, how many?
Eighteen more in kindergarten.
No, how many did you have to send to?
Well, he took some, some, thousands of students who went to Great Plains in grade three and I just spoke with Miss Smith the other day and she told me it was a total of ten students.
From three?
K and three.
K and.
Thank you, Mrs. Horn.
You're welcome.
There's more tied in back there, she should have popped up. Those are your evaluations.
Just in general, I thought that given the, the earthquake, the hurricane and the flood, we're doing all right. We're opening, we're opening school, as it turned out, we had three days of in-service on Tuesday night prior to the, the talking with the city. The reason why we could not open up, although we did have power out of all of our schools, it was deemed too dangerous as youngsters made their way to school or to bus stops. CNLP was not able to show up at the areas that they said they would be because of whatever. And in talking to Antonio from the city, he called and we discussed the safety part that we could not guarantee safety, so we decided it was the best thing to do, not have students in the school. So that's why we went to Tuesday. We do have to make up those days. Calendar already is prescriptive of how we're going to make up days, which says we'll add to the end of the year and then we'll look at things as we go through to see if we need to use a February date. So, you know, that's all, that's all there. As far as the opening of schools, I've been around to many schools and so has Bill, things are moving ahead. We're crowded, I think, you know, certainly the middle schools are crowded, they've had to do a few things a little bit differently, assign seats in cafeterias, they have a different way of regress and into the, in and out of the, of the schools, but generally speaking, things are going well in high school. I attended their faculty meeting with Gary Caccio, Garrett, his first meeting and that was a great meeting and that was well, very well. That's it. We are also having some problems with transportation. No news, right? And some of it is because of late changes, it's mainly because when we don't have full day kindergarten, the arrangements for after-school Danbury for years has taken students, pick them up at their home and drop them off somewhere else. And it's getting that information to the bus driver, through the bus company and making sure that, you know, the kids aren't dropped off at the wrong spot. We've had some challenges there because it takes about five to six days to turn that information around. So we're working, still working through that. I don't know if you want to plug in any of the transportation challenges at this point.
I don't know if there's anything else I can add. Word for word, okay. My department members are doing a lot with the SDA and yes, we've had a series of late starts, late drop-offs, right, bus stops, locations as well. But again, I think that would be very soon to be in this year, we want to have a lot of our own transportation.
Okay, I have freshman sports here, just to update you on this, you know, I did get, I did, as you know, the city council did approve allocating money to the, to the parents. I thank the parents for all their efforts in raising the money that they did run out of the way, so thank you for that. So we think that's solid. We had just asked how it might, you know, how that might roll out. We did get a check and well, let you explain, we'll wrap it that in order that we might get the money, how we can do that.
The SOS organization delivered a check, a value of eleven thousand dollars approximately two weeks ago to our office. Shortly thereafter, the mayor and the city council released the notice to the public that our unaudited balance for the last fiscal year would be passed along through the SOS group in a short period of time. I have learned as yet as well about the city, my counterpart on the city, the city finance director has made payment as yet. We're prepared obviously to continue to work with the group. We have estimated costs for this, for the fall program, so pushing sounds twenty-four thousand dollars that will be spent over the course of the next five to six period. We're averaging approximately four thousand dollars per period. Eleven thousand dollars to cover the lead costs of the program for the next quarter five weeks for the SOS group and for the city funds to finish up the fall season.
So the question I have is just overall, the money the city's allocated and the money that's been raised, is enough to cover all three seasons this year?
That's right.
And some, well, I guess it depends how much is actually spent in terms of how much is left over at the end of the future. Thank you. Mrs. Marler?
If there is money left over at the end, it goes back into the booster club?
Well.
The money that was allocated from the common council?
Yes.
It really is not, it's allocated for a certain thing. So if that's left over at the end of the year, it goes back to the booster club?
That's my understanding.
We want to make sure that, you know, that's the understanding that we all have.
Okay. And I thank the parents again for the, for it much. The update on the summer facilities projects, construction?
I'm busy summer season. The lighting retrofit has operated at Danbury High School, Wobbe and Rogers Park. All the contractor measures have been completed at Danbury High School. CLP has inspected, approved and released a final payment to our contractor, which still re-concur at the ASAP. Wobbe Middle School, all the contractor measures have been completed as well, we're awaiting final extension at utility company. And at Rogers Park, most of all the work is scheduled to be completed, I mean, overall by the end of this week. So the lighting project is approximately ninety percent complete for all of the secondary schools. The solar panel project, request for bids will publish in the Lollapalooza Times on the third of September and April as well, this is Saturday, Sunday. The mandatory walkthrough for all the interest parties was held last Thursday at both also Danbury Park Elementary Schools. As a result of our QRP, we had, those showing six companies with interest, of the six, I'd say that at least three or four were very good prospects. There will be an official bid opening scheduled for this Friday afternoon at four P M. All bids will be, or the bids will be opened at the Osborne location, should interest any board member or public to attend, that will be on this, this Friday at four P M. Shortly thereafter, we'll gather a small team of district representatives to review and award the contract to the vendor of choice. All vendors have been notified that the work must commence immediately and not be postponed afterwards. So the solar project at the three Danbury schools will begin very, very shortly in time. The city's undertaking over the course of the summer months with regards in terms of the boiler replacements. Received, was copied, an email from the Honeywell representatives to city officials that all boilers will have at least one primary, all their old schools will have at least one primary per functional by the first block over. The plan is to have all of the secondary burns and all pipe be completed by, you know, whatever happens on site and prepared for to be all used. So the city's project is well underway and it's ready for any schedule.
Received something today, mail, actually right before this meeting, opening up our mail, the windows replacement project at the high school. And when we talked with Farid about that, there's some processes that have to happen regarding that, that we're just giving you information regarding that. They also completed the field at the high school and so it was prepared so youngsters were able to use it for their practice and their competition, so that's all that's funded.
Prepared for the test course.
And to test course. Have they been, have they been completed?
Yeah, they are.
Gary?
I believe they are.
Yep.
He's not making a racket up there for us? But they're on way good. All right. Anything else with that? So, there are some challenges still at ACE. They've conducted a study and you know the problem, ACE has been a water problem, the effervescing on the bricks, it's created because of a system that is, was innovative in the eighteen hundreds, I guess, but it's an internal system for water being, going through internally and they, and they, they think they have to remedy that before they can do something, so that's, that's a major, major ordeal. So Antonio's meeting with Maine, consultants have given him their reports, we'll have to figure out what's going to happen with that. It's not an easy fix, not at all. I guess you've been part of something some years back when they did some work there, but the water is a problem. So there's any use fixing anything until the leak itself stops, so that's, that's a real challenge to, to, to the city.
Mr. General, could that potentially be a health problem for any school?
Yeah. I mean, you know, it'd be a whole problem, we have to be village, village alone about being in there and making sure that that isn't a problem, but that's, that's a problem. And, you know, we're talking about space, you know, we have students that only have a little ninety-one?
Eighty, eighty, eight, eighty-six.
Eighty-six this year, we had seventy-two last year. We may have to do something.
Mr. General, I just, the city is keeping an eye on this inspection with what you said.
I, I just spoke to, to Antonio this morning, the reports have come in and I know he's been sharing with the engineers and the mayor and we're going to be meeting this week before we get to figure out the next steps, but if there's some issues. before we get to figure out the next steps. But if there's some issues there, you have a, the city, we have, we have a program of inspection for mold and if it happens, we're going to deal with it.
I would hope they could, you know, I didn't know that it was not already exist, that they keep an extra eye on it. Health and safety is the bottom line.
It's not good, it's problematic. But I did want to note to you a couple of that. NCO, I'm sorry.
Like I said, just something, I think eventually we would have to think about, and I know we can't do it, but I think eventually we would have to look at moving those students and what it's, I think it's, it's going to eventually come to an end.
Move the students out of ACE, if it's, if it's going to be interesting. Yeah, maybe. You know, they had money in the budget to, to deal with it, but again, I think that the money would not have been spent well until they could three-year-olds stop that internal system. But you're right, you may have. NCOB, I, I put a memo in here. There's the reauthorization of the, of the secondary elementary act, so we're not even calling it NCOB anymore. And this is all coming to fruition because about eighty percent or eighty-one percent of schools across the nation now are in this category of needing improvement. And I think that's brought enough pressure to Washington, saying, you know, what is this all about? And both sides today have admitted that it's a failed process, NCOB. The concept of achievement gaps and identifying needs, that's not a problem. It did well for doing that. It really exposed some real issues in the school systems that we have to deal with. But the punishment piece, the redistributing of money, for example, we talked today, we need some expansions of some tutorials for our kids, but the law required us to spend a percentage of our Title I money and for private, to, to private, and we're, we're paying now close to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Two-hundred-and-thirty-eight.
Two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars out of our allotment, which we're not permitted to, you know, have any programs for youngsters on, at our schools. And we're not getting the results and that's continuing to go. Duncan has, because he's, he's made statements at various venues that it's a failed program, has, has tempted the idea of a, of a waiver. But Connecticut, and I agree, I don't think a waiver would help us. What a waiver would do is basically try to accomplish voluntarily that he has not been able to accomplish through the law. That's reconstituting schools, redoing the entire organization. The waiver doesn't do anything about assisting schools in this respect, or of the resources at all. So we're asking for some regulation relief. One of the things is identifying schools. Some of the central states have frozen the bar in terms of meeting the standard. If, if the standard that was used seven years ago was used now, all of our kids would be officially exceeding. But Connecticut, unlike some other states, instead of just setting the bar and leaving it there, waiting for two thousand and thirteen to reset the bar, they kept doing it incrementally. So that bar kept moving and we kept getting, you know, more, identifying more and more kids. That's why you're seeing so many schools in that category. But we're asking the commissioner, new commissioner, to say if they could freeze the bar so that we can, you know, work at a standard and not, not continue moving up. So Connecticut's looking for some regulations like that rather than supporting a system that's going to give us a waiver. Anything more to comment about that?
The, we've been saying this for quite some time, we're very vocal on this subject. It sounds that we give a quarter million dollars a year to supplemental educational service providers. There is no evidence in Connecticut that's making a difference. So we're basically wasting a quarter million dollars that we could be using for all the special programs that we want to put into place. Secondly, the waivers, Sal went up to Congressman Murphy's session, former of state, and as we learn more about this, the waivers are as pernicious as the law. And so it's just, you know, damn if you do, damn if you don't. And the advice I've been from everyone is don't do it. The state is saying we're not going to buy into this. What's really broken is the idea that a hundred percent of the kids are going to learn the same way at the same rate, and they're all going to be at the same endpoint by two thousand and fourteen. That makes absolutely no sense. So there's, the timeline is flawed and the outcome expectation is flawed. The last part, which we've been very supportive of, is the highly qualified, and we have wonderful staff, honest staff. Other states have had major problems with this, we have not. We've been very aggressive with our certification laws all the way down the road. So what we're pushing for is the idea, could Sal talk about it, could we talk about it, the growth model? It says wherever we are, have we grown over time. If you, when we do our testing report, if you look at our district reference group, Danbury is at the top or in second place in about fourteen districts. And in fact, in many areas, we've outscored our entire district reference group, and we're in the middle of the next reference group higher, and even at the bottom of the next group, reference group higher than that. So we recognize that we have issues, our A L population is challenging for us, we have the highest scoring district in our district reference group, with A L P's, but there's still a big gap. So we know what we have to do. If we had that quarter million dollars, we can take and put in supplemental programs for our kids and do a panel chat with it. It's taken right off the top by federal law. And that's what the legislators are finally, I mean, that's what Washington is finally catching on to. This was a horribly flawed law from day one. And now, the last stat I heard was eighty-two percent of the schools in the country this year will be identified as family schools. Not just urban schools, across the board, from the most impoverished to the most downplayed. Something seriously wrong with eighty percent of our school. And next year, if nothing changes, it'll be up in the nineties. Until finally two thousand and fourteen, a hundred percent of our district schools in the state, the country, will be family schools. So something clearly has to give, and that's what they're ragging with right now.
Well, I, I, I just feel a bit stressed because I'm using this as an example, but then, these are just topics that we've talked about before and the board would like more information on, and I'd like this, you know, do throughout the year. I also have on the bottom, if there are other topics you would like us to, to think about, to present, you know, you've been asked about the balance clarity, about the technology. So we just kind of put them in the quadrant. This is the way we run our meetings, teaching and learning, personnel, administration operation, parent community, and these are just areas that we're going to update and go on, to keep you better informed. So if you have some other areas, put them down and then I'll look at them, we'll figure out how to get it in. Some of these will be, maybe need to be a workshop, some of these can be just quick updates, small presentations, but it's an attempt to try to keep you all updated in areas that sometimes you have questions or we don't get back to you after a meeting. So hopefully this will help us out. Site, we, also at NCOB, we have the high school, ACE, and State and Rough have site-based councils operating. They've actually had one meeting with two meetings built in some cases, two meetings, and so they're up and running. That's it.
Thank you. One for action items for this evening. Chair Sixx motion regarding action item A.
That the Board of Education accept the resignation of our board member Keith Giallito as exhibit eleven dash one-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. This is Cooper. Discussion on action item A. I'd like to start by thanking Keith for coming this evening and, you know, accepting our congratulations and our gratitude for your two years of service on the board. And a little prior to when you started here, with your work with D A O and T Bowl, you've also been active with football, and you probably can't miss other D A O and other youth activities in the community. And I'd like to thank you personally for all of your service, your hard work during the time here, and for all of your work for the youth of our, our great city. So thank you very much.
Just want you all to know that nothing's going to change, except that I won't be on the board, but I'm still, I have a house in North Haven, but my home is in Danbury, and I'm still doing for the kids. And like I said, nothing changed, but I'm not on the board, which is a policy that we had to go by. So if you need me, call me. Everybody has my number. I'm still there.
And I'm thankful that our kids will still be benefiting from your involvement with our, with our civic act.
Thank you.
Anyone for, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstention, and with reservation, we accept the reservation. Thank you. Chair Sixx motion regarding action item B.
That the Board of Education accept the June two thousand and eleven and fiscal year two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven operating results analysis general fund as presented in exhibit seventeen dash one-six-five.
Is there a second?
Second, and this is Tabitha.
Discussion on action item B, Mr. Wolfman.
Thank you. For the month of June two thousand and eleven, the district expended sixteen million nine hundred thirty-nine thousand four hundred and eight dollars. For our fiscal year-to-date expenditure valued at one hundred eight million one hundred thirty-nine thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars. Tonight's report also captures the fiscal year-end performance for the Board of Education. Last fiscal year, the total budget appropriation was one hundred thirteen million eight hundred ninety-five thousand two ninety-one. We had a set aside for the air safety fiscal stabilization funds valued at three million two sixty-one oh thirty, for a net revised appropriation value of one hundred ten million six thirty-four two sixty-one. I guess a hundred and ten million dollar revised appropriation as of June thirtieth, we had expended one hundred eight million one thirty-nine, costing ninety-eight percent for the fiscal year budget. And at June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, we carried encumbrances, accounts payables valued at two-point-four million dollars. Inclusive of the encumbrances, we expended ninety-nine point nine-five percent of our budget for non-audit fiscal balance of fifty-seven thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars thirty cents.
Any questions for Mr. Wolfman?
Another question, I'm looking at ninety-nine point nine-five percent and given how so many things are the way out, you know, the encumbrances coming in, I think that was, I take a ninety-nine point nine-five percent of the office.
Better than I myself.
It's all right.
Or ninety-five percent, yeah.
Any further questions for Mr. Wolfman? Before we vote, just want to thank you for closing out another year of our books. Thank you very much, Mr. Wolfman. So no further discussion, those in favor of action item B, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstention. Motion carries unanimously. Chair Sixx motion regarding action item C.
That the Board of Education accept the June two thousand and eleven operating results analysis grant projects, exhibit eleven dash one-six-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, and this is Cooper. Any discussion on action item C, just one.
Thank you. For the month of June two thousand and eleven, the district expended total federal, state, and special project grants valued at four million one hundred sixty-two thousand nine hundred forty dollars. For our fiscal year-to-date expenditure valued at twenty-one million eight hundred sixty-six thousand two hundred seventy-one, represents approximately eighty-point-eight percent of the reported advanced federal project of course as.
Any further discussion, any questions for this one? Seeing none. All those in favor of action item C, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstention. Motion carries unanimously. Chair Sixx motion regarding action item D.
Let the Board of Education approve an agreement between the Danbury Board of Education and Connecticut Executive Community Think, C I C, for school food service agreement with head start for the periods of September first, two thousand and eleven, through August twenty-first, two thousand and twelve. Furthermore, let the Board of Education, Board of Education designate superintendent of schools as the authorized representative in signatory accordance with exhibit eleven dash one-six-seven.
Is there a second?
Second, and this is Tabitha. Any discussion on action item D? Mr. Geneller?
Question. Billy, on the, the rates that we have, that's attached for breakfast lunch. Do the rate change from prior year?
Yes. For breakfast, the new rate is about forty-five, three cent increase over last year. Lunches, uh, up by five cents, and snack we increased by two cents, uh, three cents, five cents, two cents respectively of the meals served, but the full value of the increase by the state of Connecticut. So we were able to negotiate a full value transfer from head start to the Board of Education. So we picked up the full value of the state increase in reversals.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion on action item D? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstention. Motion carries unanimously. Chair Sixx motion regarding action item D.
That the Board of Education approve the P H S field trip to Paris, to Ruby Air, Rome, April thirteenth to twenty-second, two thousand and twelve, as exhibit eleven dash one-six-eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, and this is Cooper. Discussion on action item D. Mr. Geneller?
My question is, how many students at this point have signed up for, for this? The affair seems to be kind of steep, and I'm surprised.
Do you want to?
Please.
That's his approach. Thank you.
First of all, they're, they are not allowed to sign up because we need your approval.
Good question. I'll be the lawyer, let me rephrase it. How many students do you anticipate on this trip?
How many students have indicated interest?
Yes.
Numerous students. One particular student that stands out in line, he's a beginning student in French. English is his second language and he's just so excited about learning a third language. And he said just yesterday, Madame, what's going on with this trip? And I said, well, I have to go to the board and they have to approve it. He said, because I'm going to get a job and I have to start working and save for the trip. So there's quite a bit of interest.
I'm, I'm, very honestly, I'm very surprised in terms of the economy, somebody having to give a, the reason.
Well, the, the company that I'm using is the same company that the London group is using. We have floors and they're very accommodating. They have monthly payments available, so it's not a lump sum payment. And there is fundraising available, but these kids know about this, this trip that, you know, so far, thank you, has taken place annually. So therefore, there has been some previous preparation financially on the part of the parents, Christmas money from grandma, grandpa, et cetera.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on action item D? Seeing none. All those in favor, just signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstention. Motion carries unanimously.
Yes, I'll see you in a few weeks for Quebec.
All right. Chair Sixx motion regarding action item F.
That the Board of Education participate in a lighthouse training program sponsored by K, the State Department of Education, as exhibit eleven dash one-six-nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, and this is Cooper. Any discussion on action item F?
Mr. Tabitha. I'd just like to ask Dr. Pascarella, I remember at the workshop, I believe it was mentioned that it's great to have the superintendent onboard on that, remember that or am I? Okay, so Dr. Pascarella, what's your feeling on that?
Well, I think if we're going to do it, we need to make sure everybody attends the training, because there are quite a bit of modules. Where, this is only its third year, a very few school system that participates. The area, talking to those superintendents where it was really a useful tool in understanding the data and with the boards versus drilling down the data, and where they, where people got too involved in the operational piece, it was somewhat problematic. So when they say try to get the superintendent, what we're trying to say is make sure that it's at the level where we understand what the purpose of getting the data. So I think it's a good program, and I think it can use well if you're, if you're training. There's a lot of data, and the thing that you don't want to do is continually mine data that's worthless, depending on individual needs and interests. We constantly have to create the parameters, so we're not just flying out there, getting too much data. So I think, you know, going through the training, understanding that would be helpful when we talk about data. So I, you know, I would, but we do, we do need to go through the training. I mean, you talked to K about the training component. I had not spoken with him about that.
They, at, at our meeting, they indicated if we were to go forward, they would work with us to work and develop a plan in terms of timing, maybe it's, maybe. That's right. Any further discussion, Mr. Tabitha?
I, I just, on something like that, it's sort of like our evaluation, self-evaluation workshop. I, I believe it's a good idea if just about everybody in the board participates. I believe it's a good idea if just about everybody on the board participates. But if we have trouble just getting over sex or something like that, I'm not sure if now even because, you know, this is something that either the whole board, you know, the whole board does it or doesn't. And we do have a number of new positions that probably will be coming up in the number. Of course, we have people who are not running, other people running. I was wondering, can we hold off on this until the new board comes on and just see what the feeling is, whether we will have the vast majority of the board commit themselves to this. Like I said, I don't, if we did it and we didn't have the vast majority, I'm not sure what the value is, to be honest.
Mr. Cooper?
Mr. Jennings, I thought at our retreat, that was one of the suggestions from the person, the moderator, that, you know, we could look at the time frame that once the election is over and we have to evenly get set up some time frames, that hopefully we're going to involve those new members.
Right, I think, I think, I mentioned this at the retreat, that the fact that we're going to have to be four, at least four new members, that was an item we discussed. And I think if we don't necessarily have to begin the training in order to say this is what the board wants to do in terms of new members coming in and understanding roles and responsibilities and what's expected of them, I think it's important that we have new people onboard, that we're committed to doing this. And it doesn't necessarily mean we have to start the training immediately, but we need to make a commitment to going to improve our understanding of data and the law function. I think this sends a message that for all of the new board members and prospective members, that this is expected as a part of becoming a board.
Yeah, I'm obsessed. Even along with that, we have our new board orientation package that was put together that once those board members come on, their responsibility as far as being a board member will be fully outlined in that package, so we can work with them and still continue to do this well.
Mr. Jennings?
I agree with your assessment. I think, I was very impressed with the presentation. I think it's an excellent management tool. I think the existing board should set the tone and make decisions based on what we're doing today. And as a new board member comes on, that board member is charged with what the responsibility of on the board. This is, I think, a great, great management tool. It ties into the menu that we have here, so we're looking to be more proactive, we're looking to utilize data, we're looking to measure things. I think it's a great, I think it's a great program and I think the faster we accept it, the existing members, you send the right message. The training part when it starts is something else. And I think it's very complimentary to the orientation for that package. Any further discussion on...
Just one point, it's not just the new members, it's all the members, those who are here too, you know. I mean, there are some people absent sometimes too, and I mean, if you're not letting that be there, I mean, I'll go along with it, you know, but the thing is, I really believe that you have to have the vast majority, I hope we do, that's what I'm saying, okay?
Any more questions?
I'm all for it. I think it's about teaching and learning and I think we should be about teaching and learning ourselves, so. I think it's an excellent tool.
Thank you, Mr. Longo. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The chair seeks a motion regarding Action item G.
Let the Board of Education ratify the collective bargaining agreement with the school lunch employees' reorganization.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Tabersak. Discussion on Action item G.
If I might, I realize actually that to accept that you may want to have a discussion in executive session for this, go to the public session following, that's appropriate. Those of you who have served on the negotiating team know that this was the third and final year of the school lunch employees' contract and we were at the table for purposes only when we negotiated wages, because we were reopening year three. And the contract that we proposed to be ratified tonight includes no wage increase whatsoever, but the addition of one floating holiday, which we've already listed twelve. And for those of you who again are familiar with the process, in terms of cost, it really, it only complicates costs in the extent that those people who use and exercise a liability take the day and we need to accommodate substitute for those days. Again, there's no wage increase, there's no other change to the terms other than the addition of one floating holiday. So if we'd like to have further discussion, executive discussion on the negotiating process, have to do that and defer this vote after executive session. Thank you for the chat.
Is there any interest to take this until later? Seeing none, any further discussion on Action item G? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, information.
May I bring some more attention? In the information, one of the things that we were asking for to look at, tell me how you want to handle, are the stadium fees and update, now that the field was ready to be rented again, we could do that, but in doing that, I had to look at surrounding schools, what they're doing, because there are so many more fields available, then there was a price differential, so there's some recommendations there about if we move forward with pricing wise. So I don't know if you wanted to go to the finance.
I would suggest that, I would suggest that anything about fees should refer to the finance meeting.
So you need a call meeting.
Mr. Gennelli? Okay, so we'll schedule a finance meeting to discuss that.
I did, there are, just so you know, there are people waiting and so soon as you can schedule a meeting, thank you.
I would suggest the other information, I advise people to read their questions. Mr. Jennings?
The part of Bob's conversation on board attendance, item 11 dash 172. I don't know how to contain what I'm going to say, the vote's been accused of speaking my mind and not being a politician and flattery, but I take what I do on a board very, very seriously. The time I spend on a board is, I devote to, I think beyond what was necessary. But based on the schedule that we have, and just running down quickly, we have 11 members on a board, there's 12, I think, meetings. Just looking at things, we had one member attend 33 percent, three members 50 percent, two members 66 percent of the time, one member 83, two at 91, and two at 100. Take, there are five members going back in a higher end, five out of 11, 45 percent of the board attended more than 66 percent of the time if you look at an average of 70. I think it's a disservice to the credibility of the board to not have a full attendance, the amount of critical work that we do, we're dealing with a $100 million budget, we're dealing with budget cuts, we're dealing with layoffs, not to have 100 percent participation, I think is absolutely wrong, I believe, of board members. And if you may know each of new members coming on the board, if personal life conflicts with their job as the board event rep, then to voluntarily get off the board and give it to somebody who's going to work and participate. We need all the 11 bodies in order to drive this board. It's also a disservice to the administration, we lose credibility and respect to them, it's a joke to the public who sees us dealing with a budget of this magnitude proposing cuts, and we've got the same seven people around the table. I'm embarrassed and I'm really tired of taking a slap on the face or being fingered that we're ineffective. I don't know what we can do, but I think we just have to go out to campaign work and make the new board members understand that this is a very, very important role and it's more than coming to a bi, you know, bi-weekly meeting and say voting yes or no. If they want to do that, that's the least they could do, but please make the attendance in the time. That's what I've got to say. Figgy backs with what Bob was talking about, a meeting we have on Saturday with a retreat, we've got the same seven people attending these meetings. So it's very disheartening and it's very, very, very embarrassing.
What I would say is, I can't disagree with you on anything that you said, but I do think that by putting this, I put this on the agenda deliberately to make sure that people are made accountable for what they're doing or not doing. But I do think people are starting to think about if they can't make the commitment to get off. There are people who are not running again, there are people who are leaving for, you know, reasons that they need to leave. And so I think we're slowly moving in the right direction. So I think we're going to hear. Any more questions? Anyone further? Okay, the board chair versus report, the 2011 KCAPS conventions, November 18th and 19th, I volunteered to attend that this year. I am serving on a couple of the K committees, so I'll be kind of delegate assembly if I can advance the meeting. But I do sit on the government relations and the resolution committee of the K, so. Also, just for information, a couple of days ago, I got a letter, I've been appointed to the state task force on vocational technical high schools. So that first meeting was on the 27th. I think it's important I'm representing boards of education across the state, which are, you know, one of, you know, positions to be either harmed, probably not benefited, but, you know, there's a lot to be said for the state, there's a lot that's been said about potentially transferring these schools to local jurisdictions and, you know, the fear there is that we just don't get enough funding and we cannot take on what amounts to unfunded band-aid for an $8 million operation, which I looked up what Abbott's budget is, somewhere near the $8 million. So I'm going to represent school boards across the state and there's about 15 people on this panel to find a report back to the governors to, you know, check it. So I'll keep you all informed, but we really need to be involved with this to make sure that our interests are met, and the interests of the students that go to these schools, you know, we don't want to have them shortchanged by tinkering around with budgets or organizational structures. So we'll see what happens there, I'll keep you informed of that. And then the last thing, I'd like to entertain the board to, my oversight, we put in the calendar together, the next Wednesday, the 28th, is the start of the Jewish New Year. So I don't know if anyone is objecting to moving to the next meeting, to Tuesday, the 27th. Does anyone have an objection to that? Yes, we have, that's my mistake, I did catch that.
Mr. Jennings, I think there is a, oh, a bad hoc meeting that you said for the 27th?
Right, right. We could possibly, we could work on a different date for that and maybe move it, move it to the K cap meeting and get up. I'd like to get it moved up, maybe think about it Monday. Thanks for...
So with no objection, we'll hold a special meeting for, to the 27th, and we will not leave on Monday.
Is that a happy egg?
That's in our dismissal.
Is that...
We've done that.
The 27th, Tuesday?
No, we did vote, we did vote on the calendar at the beginning of the year. Oh, no, we're calling a special meeting, so that doesn't apply. If we were to move the regular meeting. So we're going to call a special meeting for September 27th, we will not be able to make it. Thank you very much. That's my report. Communiti reports, say some.
Yes, Mr. Longo gave my report, thank you very much. And just tomorrow, we are holding interviews to settle the position of sites and facilities. Actually coordinator.
Along those lines, how many candidates?
I'm not sure how many we have confirmed for child, I think it's on the, we have quite a few, I think it was over 40 candidates.
Thank you. Mr. Gennelli, community motions.
Yes, I'd just like to report that this past Monday, Dr. Pascarella, myself, had met for about an hour with Judge Diana Ayman. She oversees the Chamber of Commerce. Judge Ayman has been working with us in the past to try to get the business community more involved with the Board of Education. Our focus on Monday was essentially to develop a plan of attack, to how to reach out to such a vast community. There are special areas in terms of industries there, the banks, real estate people, corporate leaders. It's very important for the business community, the qualification system in the district. Ayman is very fortunate to have so many diverse industries and so many in the science and technology area that they can participate and help us, trying to do this through the adopted school program. We'd like their participation in terms of that and giving us in-fund services. We're looking forward to certain things in the future, all these little mini academies for the high school, these are great resources for that. Plus, the students in Danbury are potential employees or future employers of the city and the more of a coordination we get between the business people, the parents, and the administration, it sort of fills that joy, it takes a village to raise a child. So we're very excited about that. We're looking to have luncheons with clubs like the Lions Clubs, Quonix Clubs, we'll make presentations to them to explain what our challenges are, and it's a twofold type of situation. The other thing that we've been working on was, last year, we started, there was a survey that came out that was done by the Housatonic Valley Coalition, sorry. We did a survey, there was one question on that survey which upset me. Joyce explained the question and Dr. Rossi was very, Dr. Rossi, Stan Watkins, myself, Joyce Emmett were working on this last year. Mr. Pacaccio also is in agreement with what we're looking to do and Joyce explained what we're looking to do as a result of this survey.
Mr. Jennings? Mr. Jennings?
If you recall, the survey was done in the spring of 2010 where the Housatonic Valley Coalition of Substance Abuse funded a local group, Stand Together Make a Difference, and as Mr. Gennelli said, that Stan Watkins, who's a crisis counselor at our high school, chairs this committee, there's representatives from the community on this. And the results, we got the results back during the last school year and started making attempts to unveil the results. So a meeting was held in the community, folks were invited, the results were shared, I shared results with the board. As Mr. Gennelli said, the one concern that really pops out at you with the lowest score that the youngsters reported on was that young people, young person perceives that adults in the community value you. Now, there's a little bit of confusion with the question, as evidenced by the fact that 16 percent of Danbury youth responded positively, but yet the national average is 17 percent, Brookfield came in at 15 percent, Richfield came in at 14 percent. But still, we do, we are concerned about that. And as a result, Housatonic Valley Coalition did a parent workshop last spring, then followed up by a two-night workshop where people in the community were able to get trained on how to be an asset builder, how to support youth in our community. So it's not just a school issue, it's certainly a community issue. And as Mr. Gennelli said, Mr. Pacaccio and I and Mr. Watkins met earlier this week to talk about what this year's plan is. And so we know the kinds of things that the school can do, you know, our advisory committees, our advisory groups will work on some of these topics, the peer leadership program, the health curriculum, will all address some of these concerns. Stan Watkins Committee meets the first Monday of every month at 6:00 PM. Their first meeting was canceled because of a conflict in the schedule, but they will be meeting either next Monday, I believe. And they'll be talking about their plan for the year. So one of the things that they're working on is a community resource fair that will be held at the high school where resources that are available in the committee, in the community, will be shared with the youngsters. So this is an ongoing thing and then probably after another year, when this group of youngsters will go on to the high school, then there'll be another survey to look at if there's been any impact in terms of the outcomes.
Presentation of that.
Oh, that's right, yeah. We did, thank you, Mr. Pacaccio. There was a presentation.
There will be the next.
Yeah, it was scheduled and then it was canceled because of the PD days being canceled of hurricane. So Alison Foulton from Housatonic... So, Alison Fuldland from the Housatonic Valley Commission, she will present to the faculty on the first Tuesday of October at the faculty meeting. So, you know, faculty is, will be made aware and then certainly very specific people that have direct input into some of the things that we look to deliver will then be awesome work.
Well, I think this is very important, because philosophically, I could last this, is that there's an adult who makes a change and a difference in the life of a student or a child. And if there's that big of a disconnect, then it's more difficult for us to, to have that favorable effect. So, it's a very worthwhile course and very exciting and I think that Mr. Pacaccio for picking up what we've done last year and, and also buying into the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Janelle. Finance?
Nothing to, the new data we have to say.
Policy, Mr. Tavison?
We are awaiting a, a future conference that Ken Thompson is going to. The state again has changed its mandates on bullying policy, which we just remember put into effect last year. So, after that conference and we get the information on what Ken Thompson is going to and on the explanation what's required, that will determine what we're next meeting. We'll try to, try to add a few topics. I know last year, one of the things we were trying to get at was to look, just look at, just what our term of action plan was and, you know, and so, just pushing things off. But we'll wait to that time.
Just one further comment, over the summer, it looks like they posted the regulations to the district's website, which is, it depends on whether the policies were up there, now people can see all the regulations as well to this. Thank you, Mr. Tavison. Superintendent Valuion?
Nothing to report tonight.
City Web PTO?
Yes, they had a very good kickoff meeting and one of the highlights of this meeting was a presentation that was made to them about Great Schools College Bound. And what it is, is videos for parents to help kids provide academic support at home. And so, I thought it was very good for community relations and getting parents involved and it was a good presentation. Yes.
It's quite a bit there and we're trying to.
Yes, I thought it was quite exciting, you know, for a community outreach, awesome.
It's also in two languages too.
Yes, it's in two languages, right.
District Development, the TED.
I'm going to report just a second.
DSA, not Flacco. DSA, do you see our education connection, Mr. Judd?
Nothing to report, I haven't been able to attend either one of the conversations.
Magnus School?
Also, no, it's, it's, I'm pissed.
I believe the meeting is going to be on hold.
Battle?
Okay. Without any further discussion, the board, the chair seeks a motion to move to executive session. Mr. Cooper, is there a second? Second of Mr. Tavison. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention. The board is now in executive session. We'll take our final remarks.